Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you move Mr. Kern will step out and we'll put starter... Oh, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
Does that have a second? Any discussion? Okay, please call it a roll.
Ms. Fuzon?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Yes, so the agenda passes. Okay, this is the board community dialogue as I stay away from the meeting. Let me remind everyone and Mr. Kern your excuse for this rest of the portion. So this is a 30-minute session that we've structured with the community. Have an open dialogue to improve and increase transparency and improve and create new channels of dialogue with the community. So with that said, the ground rules are fairly simple. Let's try to keep it respectful and we'll do the same and let's keep it focused to things that we can have a meaningful dialogue on. We ask that each participant try to keep their comments to five minutes, no more than five minutes, and we try to avoid repetitive going back and forth question after question. As it stands today, if everyone takes five minutes, we will not get to everybody. So we have more people requesting time than we have time. So if you can keep it under five, that would be great. If not, we have more of these, you can always come back for further sessions. From the board's perspective, we will answer what we can with what we have in front of us. If it requires follow-up, we'll commit to follow-up. We have intentionally asked the administration to not be here so we can try to keep the dialogue and keep the items focused on board level, strategy, policy, direction setting, et cetera, versus day-to-day activities of the district. So with that said, I guess we will start with Keith Fraze?
Francis Fraze.
Fraze, I'm sorry, please come up. And the topic or the specific issue to be addressed is the diversity liaison program.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening. I'm not going to speak very long, which is good for me. We'll actually try to keep it five minutes, we have three different people speaking, so we'll see how we do. But I'm Keith Fraze, I teach chemistry at Orange Middle School. I'm also one of our district diversity coordinators and wanted to give you the opportunity to hear a couple of our diversity liaisons speak this evening. A liaison, we're the second year of that program and first year that is a paid type of position and we know that that's pretty much board really appreciate that and just want to be able to have some liaisons come up and share with you just some of the neat things that are going on in buildings and let you know that it's a program that's grateful to have and we'll keep in this office. Two liaisons that will be speaking this evening are Brian Barke, he's a French teacher at Orange Middle School, and Amy Iken, who's a seventh grade social studies teacher at Berkshire Middle School. And so Brian, I think we'll do it.
Bonsoir, good evening, my name's Brian Barke, just keep standing, I'm the diversity liaison at Orange Middle School and I also teach friendship. Last year I served as the diversity liaison at Berkshire Middle School where I also taught. While there, I provided staff training on diversity awareness and the implications of diversity on student learning needs. I also worked with Amy Iken and four other staff members to run the Student Diversity Club. We had a really successful year last year in which we fostered strong student leadership in the organization without a student walk and focused on identifying and addressing diversity-related issues that impact student learning and plan multiple educational and service-related events throughout the year to promote a more positive school climate for all students regardless of their backgrounds. The key was not, the key was just giving our students a safe place for them to open up about issues related to their backgrounds, problem solve solutions, and then be proactive about creating a positive school climate for all students in our building. I'm continuing that work this year by serving as the diversity liaison at Orange Middle School. We've already elected student leaders for the organization, selected a new name for the group, which is We Are United or We Are You. Set up an online social networking page on the school ag for our group and we'll begin planning a lock-in later this month for a group. During the lock-in, I'll facilitate student discussions on what diversity is, have students participate in a school climate survey, guide them in identifying issues and reporting that affect their learning, and have them set goals in a year-long plan for addressing those issues. I'm also looking at having prominent minority professionals speak to the group about college and career readiness planning in addition to having students take a campus tour of a local university and meet with representatives from their office of minority affairs. Overall, we know that students who feel accepted and appreciated for who they are do better in school. I personally like to thank the members of the board this evening for the opportunity to serve in this position. The work that Amy, Iken, myself, and the other diversity liaisons in the buildings have accomplished have opened up a number of professional dialogues related to student learning needs that probably wouldn't have otherwise have occurred. Also, our work with the student groups and staff helps to not only create safer, more positive learning environments, but also helps to better maximize student learning for all students regardless of their backgrounds and to be better prepared for working in a world with people different from themselves. Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Amy Iken and I teach at Berkshire Middle School. It's great to be here and I want to thank you as board members. I know how much time you've put into it, my mom was on her schoolwork for 20 years and I know it's a lot, a lot of time and I appreciate your work for the good of our district, so thank you very much. The diversity group at Berkshire Middle School is also called We Are United, We Are You. We have a group of between 30 and 40 students that show up. A wide variety of students, all are represented. And this year, our goal is, and we have the opportunity, we also have Rachel's Challenge in our school and we felt last, I felt because I was involved as an advisor for both groups, we're really working towards this same end of building a positive school climate. So we have combined our efforts this year and so in, Rachel's Challenge has five different pillars that we follow. So this month is Positive Influences and next month is Dream Big. Next month, the speaker we are bringing to our schools is Henry Bommelkamp. I had the opportunity to go to Africa in August and Henry was the leader of our tour group. He's coming in from Minnesota, he's going to be the speaker at our school and he's going to talk to the topic of Dream Big. One of the things we did in Africa was stay at an orphanage in Zambia. So my, one of my goals for our group this year is to develop a relationship with the kids at this orphanage in Zambia and help them dream big, I think that's really important because coming home, I said I can't complain about anything having been over there and seeing what struggles people have on a day-to-day basis. And I really want to open up our kids' eyes to that and how fortunate they are to be here, have what they have, and how they can help others. So my group is committed to fundraising for this orphanage, developing relationships for it and we can get the technology to work to make that happen and really again kind of embrace the idea that we're all one, we're all part of the same family and I think that that's really my focus this year and the kids are on board with that and again, building that positive school climate. So thank you so much for supporting our efforts and we just appreciate it very much.
Is the, I have a question, sorry. Is the Dream Big for the whole school, is that going to be open?
Whole school, it is one of the pillars of Rachel's Challenge, there are five main themes and so we divided it as a month, so Dream Big is one of the Rachel's Challenge themes and we can certainly tie it.
So who will speak to the whole student body now?
Absolutely, yeah, we're going to have three separate assemblies at grade level. Yeah, great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
And I'll give an update on the adult strategic diversity group when we do.
In the next session?
Yes, because he had set up.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Tony Angel, report cards?
Good evening. My name is Tony Angel and I'm here to talk a little bit about report cards. We took about 10 years ago and I know we gained about 10,000 kids in taking that time and I'm sure that's real difficult to grow a school that quickly, that fast with that many kids. But as you can see from our state report cards, we are not quite kept, we haven't caught up with the expansion of our kids and our growth and kept all of our kids up to speed. I think that we'll find as the schools move on, our high school grades that we're getting are not going to see in the next five years as our elementary schools and those schools move up, which is a challenge and I think it's something we need to work at. I wanted to speak about a couple of comments in the last couple of meetings about curriculum nights. I've been to 12 curriculum nights in the elementary school and I don't think curriculum was ever brought up. It was what to do in my class, what not to do in my class, what to bring in my class. And the board, I appreciate the fact as a taxpayer, the board cutting $30 million out of the budget. But over the last three years, our schools have asked PTOs over and over again for more money for technology. I'm not necessarily a huge proponent that technology is going to educate our kids more, but it is happening. And I think if you go back through how much each school is being able to raise for their school, you'll find the same schools, PTOs giving money and other schools, PTOs that aren't able to give money because of the diversity of our school district. I think that that's dividing our community and you can see that on our report cards. I also wanted to talk a little bit more about specific report cards that many of our elementary schools did really poorly on and that was our gifted and our disability children. I, for good or for bad, have children in both realms. I have an eighth grader who is gifted accelerated, who is honestly not being challenged to his potential, but as a gifted child, he will always do that and he will do fine. My other child is gifted two but also dyslexic and he is going to challenge. So, I just... I guess I can tell you more about him, but...
She's very passionate. She's very involved in the Orange Tangi Dyslexia Network because I've seen her at the meetings.
He's a tutor, I've had him in school for many years because, it's okay. Because he was caught later, he was not in third grade and he's in sixth grade now, he's reading at a fifth grade level, so he progressed. But I realize, I'm a realist and so I realize that our schools can't do 101, which is what he needed. When he started third grade, he was reading below kindergarten level and that's just not acceptable. There are programs out there that we can test children before they get to kindergarten to make sure that we catch these children earlier. I struggled for two years trying to get something done in this school and I couldn't. And I'm a very involved parent, lots of kids out there who don't have parents who are involved. CTOP is the program that can be done at the kindergarten level. It's expensive, but, and it's probably too expensive too and I just hope to consider implementing that.
And we have to get an update on that in future meetings and I thank you for coming because you've been sitting in the audience as we go over the state report cards, so I appreciate your time here.
He was caught in third grade or...
No, he wasn't caught until third grade. And because, well, first grade, we were told, or kindergarten, we were told, oh, click it all quick and then first grade I was told, well, he's coming to your gifted older child and he's not reading like that. Well, we finished, we started second grade and I gave him the NYPD. He could not read the cat in the hat sentence without sounding out every word. And it took till that morning for him to IP. We actually started intervention at that point and regressed according to the school's AIDS tests that they do. He actually got worse, not better. And that's when I had went to Melbourne and started tutoring him before school, three days a week. I actually was told that he would become a tardy in the morning coming from tutoring. Or twice, we can see the difficulties, even when you're trying to do it on your own, you're still caught. Which after a couple weeks, I kept my foot down and said, okay, that's not going to happen. The good thing is, is he has regressed and he is at a pretty good position now. But I do want to leave you with one more thought and that is that the average reading age of a person who is incarcerated is third grade.
And we're going to be talking about the efforts in that area at another meeting and I think we are applying for a grant through the Stray Day Fund.
CTOP is more expensive, but the money that you spend, I mean, I can have a hundred and fifty people crunching numbers, the spending that you spend now, I know that Shady Head Middle School has hired five international specialists this year just to cover the kids who have ICPs.
He does a complete amount of homework, he doesn't ever read.
He doesn't? No, I know. A lot of tears and a lot of fights at home, I mean, we're still doing it to this day. So it's a huge challenge, but I'm not the only one out there.
And dyslexic students are gifted in other areas.
Actually, he scored, so on his third grade reading test, he scored a 5%. I think they don't get lower than 5%, he scored 95, 93 in social services. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Maguire, Gifted Services? Thank you for timing yourself.
Thank you, good evening. I think that is just, I so much just right, I mean, she almost introduced my topic for me. My name is Sandra Maguire and I'm a parent of a fifth grader in Greenfield Elementary and a seventh grader in Orange Tangi Middle School. My seventh grader is twice exceptional. What that means, if you're not familiar with the terminology, she's gifted and she's disabled. Her disability is, she has sensory integration disorder. Because she doesn't have academic difficulties, it was about for me through the elementary system to help them understand she still needed some accommodations to be able to learn. But because she was quiet and knew the answer at the end of the day, it was a perfect student. She didn't talk and she knew the answers. I do have to recognize that actually through the work with the administrative office and through the school, I actually have been able to create many things in the elementary level that now are benefiting my second daughter, who is also gifted. At Greenfield now we have clustering, flex grouping, enrichment, and several strategies, pullouts, pull pushes. There is kids grouped by level, all that we noticed when we started because we don't do that in this school. And I was able to work and I have to recognize the administration was responsive to my concerns, even adding some identification criteria to catch the kids that were twice exceptional. She was not identified gifted in third grade because her IQ was scoring a 114. Even though I had a letter from a psychologist from Children's Hospital who had done her entire autism spectrum testing that said that because of visual integration issues, any IQ test was going to be deficient in detecting her true IQ. After just one year of therapy, her IQ increased to 132, supposedly IQ doesn't change. So, and she just did the ACT in sixth grade, she scored 23 in the composite. The average for the district is 25, which takes me to the next, the next problem I'm having. Nothing has happened at the middle school. Sixth grade was a waste of time for my daughter. She really was no challenge, there is no gifted program. Last year we have one gifted coordinator who was also the launch teacher, the recess teacher, the suspension teacher, and everything else that needed to be done in the middle school. She was it. I think in part because of the report card and the big fat C that we got for the gifted sub-group in Orange Tangi Middle, now she has just had been pulled out of all her other duties and had been put into gifted. To my complete disdain, I just learned last week after I hear my daughter complaining about the disturbances in her classroom, the distractions, the talking, which by the way, with her sensory issues was really being an obstacle for her. I learned that somehow, somehow I had the idea that if we group the most highly gifted children with the most behaviorally challenged children, they can be good role models. That's a 1970s, 1980s theory that has been completely debunked. Every single research study has proven that this hurts actually both groups, the gifted and the kids with behavioral disabilities issues. She was quickly changed, in part because of my involvement in the school because I am advocating for her at all levels. But sadly, the argument that made it happen very quickly was her disability. I was able to use her sensory issues to, her sensory disability, to say why this classroom was not adequate. But frankly, I feel guilty because now I have left behind for all the highly gifted children that are still in that classroom, is still being affected by this school grading. I know that gifted children sometimes are seen like relatives or like they are going to be okay, it doesn't matter what. The reality is that they have emotional needs that are as challenging sometimes as kids in their own spectrum. They're different, they learn different, they need different services and we are no service to them. Unfortunately, at the state level, the current operations standards committee is not helping. It's including the standards that we're having for gifted and the talk has been out there even that all that we require them is to be ready for college. Well, guess what, my daughter in sixth grade with her amazing T is qualified into college in every single subject except science, the area that she has never been enriched on. She has shown luck for three years in a row. So, I just wanted to come and tell you a little bit about my story. I have been very impressed and very positive about the administration listening, but at the same time, I think that this has to be a strategic priority. We need, it's not enough to say we have so many highly gifted children, we just cannot serve them all. We really need to do our job identifying, we need to do what our job services them and we need to do it in the area that the resource shows that works. And otherwise, we're going to have to, we're going to be wasting a lot of resources. Now, some people can say, "We're part of the school." I have to every single private school. I'm proud to say that actually, we're awesome, we have the things that I can find in private school. And for truly highly kids, private school is not answered, they don't have the answer either. Having her in seven different grade levels or going to ninth grade English when she was in fifth grade was not the answer. So, I really would like to work with you, propose maybe create a committee, some kind of group that we can really have a strategic direction. I know that you want to do the right thing. We have a tremendous bulk of brain power in this community and we really should be raising those kids here and really make sure that we are taking them to the next level. Thank you.
Just to mention, in fact, coincidence of time, Stacy and I met this evening as we start to prepare as the two board liaisons to the Strategic Plan Task Force. So I'm glad you used the word Strategic Plan because we talked about it, what would happen over some time would be the burning of curriculum as well as other items, 2020 committee, et cetera. And I can see where these kinds of assets, aspects can be a part of that discussion and how can we facilitate it.
So that committee can be made up of volunteers from the community and getting that input and so we're starting that conversation now and hoping to have a proposal by January on that structure and then getting people to fill those roles, so we'll make sure we have your name.
Well, please do, I am advocating at the state level, I will be testifying with the operations standards committee in November. My daughter actually will be testifying as well and I have been very involved at the state level and I have tried to tackle it operationally with administration and it's not that they have not been responsive, I just feel that we really now have, need to have this as a clear strategic objective from the district.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Kevin will give me your name. Thank you.
Tracy Wu?
Tracy Wu, from Powell. Basically, I've been watching the remediation rates for about five years now. And when I'm not, when I listen to the meetings when I can't come here and I hear a lot of theory tossed around but I guess I want to know what you know the plan is for decreasing the remediation rates. I mean, actual concrete plan because they've done that a little bit in the last five years, but they're not really moving in the right direction. So I guess I want to keep your brains to see exactly what you know because I know we hear from the administration and it's theories and it's, you know, kind of generalities, but what is your understanding of the plan for decreasing the remediation rates?
Well, our strategy will be starting out with a harder curriculum in the elementary school and focusing on math and taking away the fundraising during the year of the day when the kids are supposed to be schooled. It will be the beginning part and focusing on the basics for the kids when they're young and that will branch out the elders that are not reading at the right level, they should be later on when it's almost too late not to try and catch up. I mean, the focus needs to be at the elementary school level and we need to just focus on the core subjects, math, science, English in the beginning and then later on they can acquire other subjects if they're wanting.
And is that your personal theory or is that...
No, that's my personal...
What's, being going to be adopted or...
No, that's my personal strategy, if you ask me what it was, that's...
That's why it's a dialogue, right? So you asked a general question to each board member, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about that.
So the strategy was, with the graduating class of 2010, we implemented that all students have to, at the high school level, have to take college prep English. If you go to Dublin or Delaware or Worthington or New Albany, they can take basic English. All of our kids in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade, the minimum English class is college prep English. And now we instituted because we did see that we needed to bring those remediation rates up. So that's how we tackled that in English. Then this year, we found out that here we are working at improving our math programs and our English programs and our kids, and by the way, the remediation rates are only for those kids who are in state colleges. So like Kareem Gillum, your student doesn't count because he's at Baldwin-Walters. You know, Kelly, your student doesn't count because he's at Capital. But anyone at Ohio State, Toledo, Akron, you know, the MAC schools in Ohio State, those are the ones who count in remediation rates. The Ohio Board of Regents discovered that during the downturn in the economy, in order to earn more money at these universities, they were increasing the requirements for the, what they required for, to take a remediated class. And so at Toledo, it might be you had to score 23 on the ACT one year and then a 24 in English the next year. At Ohio State, it might have been a 28. And so they had all these remediation, I guess, qualifications were all over the board. They weren't consistent and they were moving them every year. Because if they moved them up, they had to put more kids in remediated classes. You as a parent had to pay for that remediated class, your child didn't get credit for it, so they had to take two classes in order to count. And so that was just discovered this winter through the Ohio Board of Regents. So the Ohio Board of Regents said, okay, we're going to stop this, we are going to set the minimums for remediation rates. And it's an 18 in the math and a 22 on the ACT and the English. And so now the schools know what those goals are and the parents know what those goals are and they're frozen like that. So here we were trying to work hard, you know, at getting those remediation rates up. And by the way, the latest studies we have, that they've been released for the graduating class of 2011. So like my daughter who graduated in 13, well, she doesn't qualify anyway because she's out of state, but they don't even have the information for her class that started just this fall. So they're really lagging behind in the information that we have and we're trying to beef up in math and the remediation rates are only in math and English and I'm trying to talk fast so that other people can talk. So we, so that has been our plan, is to beef up the English and math. You only take college prep English as your minimum English. Improve the math at the middle school level and hopefully bring those remediation rates down. The last rates that we have were needing remediation in math was 20% and needing remediation in English was 8%. And that was from the graduating class of 2011. So remember, we just instituted that you had to take college prep English with the 2010 class. So this is just the second class that we've seen results from. So hopefully, as more and more of our kids graduate and the numbers are produced, we'll see those rates come down even more.
And it's not 8% of the entire graduating class?
Oh, no, it's only 8% of those kids who are going to state.
Ohio University.
Right, college or university. So if you're out of state, you don't count, if you're at a private Ohio's college, you don't count. It's only the MACs and Ohio State.
Sometimes people hear 8%, 20%, and a fifth of our students are, you know, are needing that kind of help.
Okay, we're out of time, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
We do have, we'll do one more question, Terry Uline, can you come up?
Can we extend, can we go to...
No, because the agenda for the next meeting starts itself.
Hi, I'm Terry Uline, I'm from New York. I would like to make a comment, actually, just to cause some input, that the U.S. News and World Report rankings just came out for the high schools. And the rankings examine two things, how well a school does in three measures, performance of students versus the state average, performance of the disadvantaged students versus the state average, and college readiness performance. Each measure is given a score, and the scores are combined to give an overall ranking. High performing schools do a good job educating all of their students. Twenty-one thousand schools were examined. Olentangie Liberty High School is number one fifty-two in the nation out of twenty-one thousand schools. OHS is two twenty-two in the nation, OHS, oh, I'm sorry, is three ten in the nation. In the state of Ohio, there are eight hundred and ninety-two high schools. Olentangie Liberty is number four in the state. Olentangie is number seven, Orange is number eleven, and in Central Ohio, Liberty High School is the number one high school in Central Ohio. Very impressive. Olentangie High School is three, and Orange was four. I think that's lose two. And the other comment I would like to make is that my son, I've got three boys, my oldest will be graduating from Liberty this year. He's gone all the way through middle high school, yeah, through Hyatt's, and then here Liberty. And I can tell you that he is not a gifted kid, not by the wrong means, but I've had nothing but success with principals. I'm sure there's things to be improved on, some of the things talked about tonight by the parents, but I, I mean, I've had a phenomenal experience with my Dr. Mifarlin, our principal at Hyatt's, and Randy Wright, my principal at Liberty. There is just nothing that happens with my kid, even the rough spots, that does not go unaddressed or addressed above. And this boy is going to graduate very good in his class, he's ready for, in fact, he's a hundred percent college ready. I feel like I could send the boy out today and he would be absolutely ready for everything in college. And part of that, our APs that we provide our kids in high school, that ability to take those, they are very hard classes, he's taken six, but they're, more than that, more than the difficulty of it, is the practice of sitting down and studying that it teaches these kids. Because he's not a gifted kid, he has to spend a lot of time to do well in these classes. And I've just had a phenomenal experience with our administration, with our teachers, just, it's just been wonderful. I mean, having this many thousands of kids, they really do address whatever there's a problem. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Sometimes at this age, Terry, you want to send them on script, early script. You're as ready as he is.
Isn't that the truth? I mean, just graduating to see you.
So, unfortunately, we are out of time, so the agenda for the next meeting starts at seven o'clock. Three individuals, Melissa Marchio, Carl Solomon, Kelly Clark. Unfortunately, we're not able to get to your questions, encourage you to come to our next session, we'll put you at the top of the heap for the next session.
Email us.
President, the first presentation that took up ten minutes really was appropriate for the later part of the program. It's not, it's not part of community dialogue. I was very interested in it, would love to have heard it during the regular meeting, but I think we took up time. We have a lot of people here tonight that came to the community dialogue that you've been promoting and couldn't speak.
That's going to happen.
People that wanted to speak besides the people that you had in those forms because they were told they didn't have to sign. And there's a lot of folks that didn't sign those forms that wanted to speak as well. So, that's not the sum total.
Okay, so come back to the next community dialogue, you'll have another opportunity to participate, Carl.
Thanks for taking up a third of the meeting, but something that shouldn't have been part of the regular program.
Technically, Carl, I could allocate fifteen minutes to that session. I'll entertain a message to a adjournment.
Yeah, we don't know who's going to come and who's not, so moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Can I roll, please?
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Go to one. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all for coming.
It is Thursday, October tenth, seven oh eight P.M. This is the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education Work Session. So, Mr. Kern, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Feesel?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, five zero, the agenda survives. Board Work Session, the first agenda item is the operations update. Jeff Gordon is here, the Director of Facilities. Hopefully, I got your title right, Jeff.
Operations Management and Facility, yes, close enough.
All right, thank you. So, the podium is yours.
The first page of your handout is the summer utility savings for the four-day work week comparison. On that page are two, two different comparisons. And the reason for that is when we began the program in summer of 2011, the base year we're comparing to was 2010. At that time, Berkshire Heritage was not working. So, the first, the first comparison that you see there is comparing, we've taken Heritage and Berkshire off of our 2010 numbers, we've taken their usage and removed them, so that when we compare to our base year of 2010, we're comparing apples and apples. What you, so that what you see there at the bottom of that is the total kilowatt hour savings of one million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four, which extrapolated out using our current rate for electric, was the savings for this past summer on the base year of eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is down a little bit from our previous couple of summers, the estimates for those, partially because of the, mainly because we had shorter four, ten work week this year than starting school season. So, we lost about, almost two weeks of the four tens on that. So, we would expect a little higher cost on that. And this is just the electric, we didn't do a comparison for gas. Gas is minimal in summer because of the, not using the, running the heat and those things. The second one is an interesting comparison because we really were able this summer, using our controllers, to tighten down what we're trying to do with the four tens, and that is try to run the, the air less, electric less, time during the day, as much as our buildings can tolerate. And when I say tolerate, meaning there's a couple of areas that are very sensitive to the humidity if we let that build up the building, and that's the gym floors, wood floors, and libraries. And so, we really monitored those, put humidity sensors in those rooms in Washington throughout the summer, so we can turn back our amount of time we're running the air, which is minimal as possible, and still not affect those areas. Once we started seeing anything that was affecting those, we can turn it back up. By doing that, you see the bottom comparison is taking last year's comparison, which does include Heritage and Berkshire, they were here last year, to this year's, and we were able to save in addition twenty-seven thousand dollars over last year.
What do they do on the, on the Fridays? What is, what's being decreased or causing decrease? The lights are off on Fridays?
The lights are off, the air conditioning's off, we have three straight days with the, we, as long as it's not events, maybe in band camps or something, we have every year that we turn it on, but we eliminate as much as possible on Fridays, we keep buildings closed up as much as possible.
So, light and HVAC are the biggest savings?
Biggest savings.
And how, what's the occupancy of the buildings? Like, how many people are in each building, working?
On a Friday?
No, no, during the day, the week, like again, the high school.
Yeah, the high schools are almost never empty as far as students coming in, camps that are going on, band camps, other camps that are run, and secretaries, and I would have to estimate, say there's probably twenty people working in a high school, three or four in an elementary. One of the biggest reasons, or one of the biggest contributors to having around the air is waxing the floors. And that's to get the wax to dry, so we continue to get the floors done throughout the year, that helps with that. Because our buildings are conditioned for air throughout the year, we could dry the floors without wax, but it wouldn't, because our buildings are conditioned for that, would cause damage to the buildings. You know, the districts I gave you previously didn't have air conditioning, and we did the floors, it would take twice as long to have them dry, it's going to be conditioned for it, so you didn't need it. Now, if we just shut air off, it would cause problems in the buildings with the wood floors, with the...
If you drop, like, three or four people in an elementary school building, can we combine some elementary school employees and just put them in one elementary school or one area, laptop, whatever?
Yeah, we did look at that, not this passive, it's just short summer to get everything done, looked at that previous summer, and we're going to come back and look at it again next summer. We were working with the union to getting that done, it really has some pushback on moving people between buildings. So, the plan is revisit that, the goal is to have half the elementaries go help the other half for the first part of the summer, and then flip that and go to the others. That's the next step of the energy savings, is to do that. Again, we looked at it the previous summer, decided we'd wait, and the shorter summer wasn't conducive to it. So, that's the next step for next summer is to do that. Again, we've been working with the union in discussions with that.
What didn't they like, the union not like about consolidating with one elementary school?
Moving, moving people between buildings, not their assigned locations. The other part was, they felt like I do a great job in my building, and I gotta go over and clean up this person's building, because they're not doing as good of a job as I'm doing, and those, those issues. So, nothing that we can't overcome, but given the timeframe we're at, we felt it was better to work with them and get there than to just force it and not have a good result, because we tried to force it. You know, the other part that, that we've run into, we tried to force it, is vacation times. So, now I'm going to this building, I'm going to take my vacation, whole two weeks, it's supposed to be over there, and now we have a sub trying to help this guy clean his building, when he spent the previous month cleaning the other person's building, the day abandoned, him, we're not on vacation. So, we thought it was better to do it, you know, as a team, as opposed to something we're going to force on them.
Jeff?
Do we have information on, you know, you're talking about the shortened summer, so that affected these numbers, but do we have information on what we think the savings or costs will be starting earlier and ending earlier? I know this was kind of a one-off summer, but, but how is it affected with that two-week swing in the calendar overall? Will we get it back on the other end?
It should be a wash, start versus the end, going two weeks earlier versus two weeks later. I don't have any analysis on it. The thing that we, the possibly run into is now we're, we're in school, we'll be in school two weeks in August when it's hotter, so we're likely to probably run a little more in August versus what we would have run in, in the time that we would be in in early June. But I don't have any data to support that, that's just, you know, looking at this, these things and watching what happens in our buildings through those months, that would be my guess. So, we're likely to maybe see a little bit of an increase from that as opposed to what we would have seen in the other direction.
Great.
Okay.
The second page of your handout is just a summary of some things of what we've done, totals on kilowatt savings, electric savings, and I won't, I won't read it all to you, but the bottom is just some of the things we've done as far as going green by saving this electric, and that is, the amount of kilowatt hours we've saved is, equals the greenhouse, decrease in greenhouse emissions by about four hundred and sixty passenger vehicles, reduction in annual CO2 emissions, it's four hundred and nine homes, reduction in ninety-one thousand paint cylinders. So, just to give you an idea of what we've been able to save in other terms, in just the dollars in the district saving, of what we're doing for the environment.
Has there been any recommendation from students to go to a four-day school week? Like Mondays are pretty meaningless.
Aside from my children, I have not heard that recommendation. That's something that's super typical.
I mean, if it's a cost savings, it might be something to consider.
There was an article in, I think it was the Dispatch or USA Today on that a couple weeks ago, and a couple of schools and districts have do that, yeah.
At the Career Center, they have that on Fridays, if the student is qualified, they can work at home on projects.
So, are you able to track this better now? Didn't we just purchase some software?
That's my next part here.
Okay.
We did purchase software to track that, which will help us. The other thing that we did with our agreement with EnerNOC on trying to get the energy savings, or for them, shut that in the summer when they have a high load, so we have put meters in all of our middle schools and high schools, and I hope to get to the elementary. So, we are able to track, and we're dumping this into a spreadsheet, we're also able to track the meters, which rolls into the other, other part of the program we were going to talk about, is about a year ago, year and a half ago, Energy Education came in and did a presentation to the board and to the Development Committee. And what they, they wanted to bring energy managers into the district, save us energy and take half of the savings. And discussions at the Development Committee level, they felt like, you know, they're not proposing anything we couldn't do ourselves, and that we have the knowledge and the Development Committee to do that. So, we want to move towards that, we want to try it ourselves before we went out and gave that, gave the savings, half the savings to Energy Education, we wanted to, before we make that commitment, we want to make sure we could do it ourselves. One of the things Energy Education looked for in somebody to, to manage an energy manager, somebody that knew the district, somebody that was very familiar, had good relations, could relate a lot of people. We have somebody in my office that was in that situation, just through being there so long, working with custodians, working with secretaries, and known in the district, that we have temporarily reassigned for the remainder of the school year to head up the energy savings project and bring the sub in to fill, fill her duties, but to see, okay, what can we really do, what, what information can we get from the Development Committee, what information we go out and get to help us in the savings. The other piece of it is beyond somebody that can go out and be in the buildings and meet the, you know, work with custodians, work with secretaries, work with principals, is have the controls. Our controls, by a large part, we had a couple other studies done showing that you can save a lot of money if you can really tighten down your controls. And we have somebody on staff, one of our maintenance people, is, is just excellent at that, who's working closely with Chris on, on doing that. So, he's, he's helping manage the controls, they're meeting on a regular basis. Chris has already started going out and doing audits, that Energy Education topic, going audits in the building, that's being in the building at night, being in the building early in the morning, middle of the night, seeing what's running, are the exhaust fans running, is the chiller kicking on for some reason when it shouldn't, and things like that, washing the lights. And so, they've begun those processes, Chris has begun one of the audits, they identified which buildings had the highest use, where there's the most opportunity to start it there, one of being Orange High School, you know, and we saw spikes in electric. Now, we have the metering to go back and track that. We're seeing spikes in electric every night throughout the night, where they identified that the chiller's kicking on and causing, for whatever reason, there's some controls that are calling for it, even though it's not scheduled to come on, but there's limits when it hits and it comes on. So, even though we go back and track what those are and change it, so now we don't have that spike, it goes up, it goes up, runs for an hour, and comes back down. It's, it's those type of things that we're, have not been able to capture and report, because we haven't had somebody assigned the time to do it. So, I think that, I think we're going to see success with the program, we're tracking it closely, to see where we're at, and then we can make a, at the end of the school year, being summer, we can analyze it and make decisions, is this something we want to be doing on our own? Do we not achieve what we think we can achieve, or are we not heading there, we could consider outsourcing it again, if that was not, if that was some direction where we go. This has at least given us the opportunity to take a look at those things and cut those back.
And I would suggest, do you know the controls of lighting of the buildings as well? Are you able to process a lot?
Yes. Lighting and now a lot of the lights have been set on, the motion sensors when you're in the room and out, so that, that does a lot as well as just, we're working with custodians to make sure that they do, beyond that, shut those off at night and at night. So, that somebody coming in the room, running in for a vent, coming back out, does not automatically kick that on, keep it on for a period of time. The other thing to monitor is the gym lights, and some of those things. If custodians aren't in there cleaning, there's not a reason for those to be on. One of the things Energy Education really pushed, and it makes a lot of sense, it's not, it's not the whole solution to it, but it's a big part of it, is just changing habits, changing what people are doing in buildings. And we can look at the buildings in the morning, and it's something we just, we're discussing this week, and see, okay, that computer lab, all those computers were left on, because every room on each side of it, that temperature's dropped like we'd expect, that, that computer lab's holding temperature because those computers were left on. We're looking at, you know, manually shutting those off, but is there a program we can, We're looking at, you know, manually shutting those off, but is there a program we can put in place to automatically shut those computers off and do some of those things? Because we have to change habits and put things in place, we don't currently have to.
Those technologies have been around for quite a while, and you know my professional background. We've been, in our, in the buildings that we do, whether the renovations, expansions, or new, we are always using those technologies, like light sensors. In fact, you all know, new buildings, that's a code, period.
The light, the light sensors?
The light controls, the sensors.
Because people have complained that we put light sensors in, but that's building code.
That's a building code for new buildings, and as you go back to a certain point in time, we still would, in buildings, this is, you know, what we've done in the past for a number of years, we go back and retrofit it because we know that the technology, that science has proven, it does save money. And you're absolutely right, and we do it with the HVAC systems too, that you've got to sit down with those people, establish those policies, set points, whatever it might be, changing that, how people work in their buildings is very, very important.
Yeah, it's two things back to that, that, you know, the next step at some point we bring forward is we continue beyond there is tying those sensors into our fans in the building, or LED boxes, that, you know, so it's calling for air, but the teacher's not in there, but it's still circulating air. We can tie those sensors in so that it also shuts those boxes down when they're not in there. So, it doesn't have to call for air, and the building might be calling for air, classrooms next to which are occupied are calling, that classroom's getting fed because it's on the schedule, we're being called. We can tie those sensors in at some point in the future to shut those down and do that. The other part is, is when you talk about habits, and the NHVC is, one of the bigger struggles, obviously, is everybody, everybody's comfort level is different. So, we may have a teacher on both sides that's comfortable with that one, teacher in the middle's either hot or cold. And, so, come on, we gotta turn it up, gotta turn it up, and it's educating them, you know, turning you up two degrees also turns out, the other teachers who are currently comfortable won't necessarily be, and uses more energy. So, it's that balancing act.
It's a balance.
You tell them at work, get a sweater.
Yeah.
I have a scarf in my drawer for that. I mean, that happens everywhere.
All-tyne district-wide sweaters and...
Exactly, maybe that's what we need to go on. And Kristen King was at the Development Committee meeting, and they were really impressed with the things that we're doing and talking about, and that she's at three o'clock in the morning, trying to figure out why the chiller's coming on in Orange, and noticing those spikes, and then being able to address it immediately. You know, it's not, not some study, and we don't have to give away half the savings, so...
And the Development Committee really has to help, Ron Thomas, obviously, who's done it for years, that has experience in that. He has spent hours with us in helping get Chris up and running, he's probably one of his staff members, analyzing data with us and looking at numbers as well. So, you know, the thing I'll say about him is the recommendation was, well, we shouldn't give away that savings, let's do this ourselves. And we have the knowledge to do it, but they stood behind that statement and they wanted to perform.
As volunteers. It's not like they're getting half the savings, he has a company that he's volunteering their company.
I think that's a good pat on the back for Pat, uh, pat on the back for Ron, is that he is, remember, several years ago, he came into virtually every building with that analysis, and he did that at no cost. I mean, that's just enormous.
Yeah, and the work he did on the, when he did the energy savings project with retrofitting the lighting in the gymnasiums.
Yes.
He looked at the plans made in modification, had to save the district quite a bit of money, not just on the installation, but as well as the energy usage in the gymnasiums. And I think they cut out about a third of the lights, so that would be, we have ongoing savings just from taking this out.
Remember that conversation?
Yeah. And that, we'll roll in, if there's any more questions.
Well, that's good.
Next is a, is, I think the last page is the memo that you probably saw, is after we discussed on you, and then before that is a graph, which is, we've had questions before about how much money are we spending in the buildings at what levels? So, that graph just identifies what, you know, how much we spent last summer on buildings by level. And, in the last page, again, is the memo that I think you may have already seen, which just outlines the same thing as well, touches on the big projects that we had scheduled for last summer. We did complete all the projects that you reviewed last December, brought to you, other than the track at Liberty, we did not resurface, mainly because we put turf down there and then to try to force it in there at the end of the summer, or after the football season, just to see if it was like we're gonna be a product. And we've held off on that, but still plan to do that next summer, so...
I was just looking, Brian had provided us with information on building finance, or on school district finances, and I think it's like you took 25 school districts and compared our operating and our bond, and I just counted, there were 25 schools on here, and 20 of them have permanent improvement levies, and that's what they use to pay for their, the upgrades and the, you know, if they need a new roof or anything like that. So, can you remind everyone in the audience what we use to do our, that we're, the money that we're using right now?
This year, the money that we're currently using, from the last bond issue, prior to going out, the district, we, the district sat down administratively and said, okay, how much do we need for three years per operations? How much do we need for three years for transportation technology, so on and so forth? And that money was allocated and put in the bond issue. And then that has been now used and stretched into four years, and going forward, we certainly are gonna have to...
Yep.
Certainly have to look at that, Brian's gonna pull in for more. Certainly have to look at that regardless of what you do. And that money now we've used over four years, but, you know, we'll talk more, we do our permanent improvement presentation in December, we're gonna present it to the Development Committee in November and then December, so I'll kind of discuss that further. We also have our future plan looking out at that time for you guys, which is a 20-year snapshot of what we think it's gonna cost to maintain the district.
Yeah, that's, that'll be an important piece, particularly in November, looking forward at, as the buildings age and as the infrastructure ages, how do we make sure that we're adequately preparing, you know, financially, you know, for the needs that are to come.
And I don't, I do not have good numbers yet, I'm not far enough of putting the numbers together, we're still looking at the big equipment, I think when we come into sound of water, pretty good, pretty good idea of what it's gonna take and then categorize and snapshot looking forward.
Great, great. Okay, anything else?
No, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff, good job. Okay, next up is report card update. This is our third in a series of updates on the report card, and with Mr. Fettie and Mr. Rafe, we'll continue with the report card update. This is third of four or third of five?
Third of four.
Third of four.
You just want him to keep him back.
You want three out of five?
Well, we'll see.
At least I found it this time, I'm making better progress now.
You did, thank you.
All right, thank you again for giving us the opportunity to talk about our state report card, this is the third of our four presentations. So far, we've covered, first session was district overview, and then we presented our building level achievement and progress data, and our gap closing and graduation rate data by building is what we will be covering in this session, and we will culminate with our district and building level data, our annual reported academic achievement that measures all of our CIP benchmarks. So, that, that presentation will include more information on the multiple measures that we use to measure our progress. Again, just gonna quickly go back through the slides that we've already covered with regard to district achievement. We did meet all 24 standards, and our overall performance index was 107.5. The new progress measures, overall, the district earned an A for progress, with a B for gifted, an A for students with disabilities, and an A for the lowest 20%. As a district, with regard to gap closing, which is what Jack will be talking about today, our overall grade was a B, and then our, the two graduation rate measures, four-year graduation rate and the five-year graduation rate is a new measure for this report card. We also talked about non-graded items being reported, and with the, I mean ACT and SAT and AP, participation in AP performance, again, especially noteworthy. In our last presentation, we talked about specific building level achievement, and there were 22 buildings that met all the standards, one building did not meet all the standards. Seven of the buildings had an A in the performance index rating, and 16 of the buildings had a B. And then for this building level progress, there's the measures we covered in our, in our last presentation, again, so we'll rehash that. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Jack so he can talk specifically about building, gap closing and graduation rate data.
Good evening. So, gap closing, as we explored here, is another measure of achievement. Historically, when we look at these grade cards on the wall, we always talked about AYP as one of the measures, adequate yearly progress, which is the measure of each of our subgroups. That calculation is now called AMO, annual measurable objectives, but both concepts are still under the gap closing umbrella. So, gap closing and AMO are kind of used interchangeably at times on the new state report card. When we look at gap closing at a building or at a district level, these are the categories of analysis that are used by the state and the benchmarks are the goals set for each of those categories. So, again, this is a proficiency measure, like indicators met measure, which is the first of the four overall grades that we've looked at. To meet the overall proficiency measure, the goal is 75% proficiency in each subject. In gap closing, however, the standards are higher. In reading, the goal is 83.4%. So, on any given test, fourth grade reading, any subgroup of students, when they look at what those subjects are, need to be 83.4% proficient or higher. So, 84 out of every 100 students needs to be proficient in order to meet the goal for reading. The math benchmark is 78.5, the graduation rate benchmark is 75.9. There's also an attendance rate benchmark and a participation rate benchmark, and the participation rate is students actually participating in these state tests. We have to make sure that they take the test that the state asks them to take. So, these again are not growth measures, but achievement measures, and there's different targets for each category. And those targets for reading and math and graduation rate will increase each year. So, next year, when we do this again, the reading target will be higher than 83.4, the math target will be higher than 78.5.
This was the initial, if you remember, the No Child Left Behind legislation that was initially passed in 2000 or so. Initially, the, was, the expectation was that these measures would get to 100%, No Child Left Behind, so eventually it was supposed to be 100% pass through.
So, that every kid is proficient in reading and in math and graduates and comes to school, obviously. Couple other things to note with these categories. The reading and math proficiency rates are just reported on the areas where we have state tests, so that's grades three through eight, reading and math, and 10th grade OGT in reading and math. The graduation rate, obviously, is applicable only to seniors. The attendance rate, though, is applicable K through 12. And the participation rate, like the reading and math rates, is just on those areas of state tests of grades three through eight and grade 10. So, depending on where you're looking in AMOs, you might be talking about different groups of students by grade level, not, as well as by student subgroup. So, these are the 10 federally reported student subgroups that were measured against each year. For a student subgroup to count at the district level or at the building level, there must be at least 30 students in that subgroup in that building. So, in our district, that could be as few as two subgroups in a building and as many as seven or eight in a building. Depends on the student population of the building, the overall size of the building, but you can see the subgroups there. The grade calculation for each of those subgroups in each of those categories, reading, math, is done by the following. A subgroup either meets or misses the target. So, that 83.4% benchmark in reading, for example, if there are 30 or more students in the subgroup, then they take all of the scores of those students, they determine how many of those students were proficient out of how many total students who were in that subgroup, and if that percentage is 83.4 or higher, they meet the target. Conversely, if they miss the target, they receive zero points. Or, if they meet the target, but their proficiency rate is significantly lower than the previous year's proficiency rate. So, let's say the target was 83.4. Last year, the subgroup scored 98% proficient, and this year they scored 90% proficient. They still meet the target, but they didn't do as well as last year. In that case, the school's docked points or only partial points are awarded to the total.
So, they didn't do as well last year, like for, let's do fourth grade grading?
Sure.
So, when they advance a class, so now they're in fifth grade, are they compared to the numbers?
Previous fifth graders.
The previous fifth graders, okay.
Actually, excuse me, no. This year's fourth, third, fourth, and fifth graders are compared to the previous year's third, fourth, and fifth graders, they aggregate them.
Oh, okay.
By the grade levels combined.
Okay.
At the building level.
For AMO, we're talking about, on the whole...
For AMOs, yes. So, for all of these student subgroups in each of those categories.
How do you know what race they are?
It's reported by the family when they enroll in school.
But it's, it's not religion, it's race.
Right, correct. Another element that's new, and again, we've taken a long time to explain all of these different categories of this report card because there's so many nuances, there are letter grade demotions. If any subgroup scores under 70% proficient, so the goal is 83.4, if the subgroup scores under 70%, there can be a letter grade demotion. And, if any subgroup has less than 93% attendance, there can be a letter grade demotion, and I'll show you an example here in a minute. We've got, we have four letter grade demotions across the district, that we'll look at one of those as an example.
I know this, this is probably a silly question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. The attendance is based on, you know, that one week where they take attendance, or is it their actual?
Their attendance throughout the school year. So, as a subgroup, they call those students out, the 30-plus students in that subgroup, they take the total number of days in the school year, then they take the total number of days those students were present, do the calculation, and if the percentage of attendance is less than 93%, then they don't meet the number.
Okay, yeah. I'm thinking of that attendance week that is about state funding.
Right, right.
Great, thanks, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. Attendance counts.
Yes.
So, here is our grade distribution among our 23 school buildings. We had eight As in AMO, eight Bs, three Cs, and four Ds. We have four total grade demotions, and again, we'll talk about those. And then the bottom slide is a comparison across the state of the grade distribution. So, 19% of schools, not districts, but schools, we're looking at the school level right now, earned an A, 16% earned a B, 10% earned a C, you can read the rest, 45% earned an A. We had no As. And these grades are calculated, again, based on a 100-point scale. So, when you meet an indicator, you get 100 points, if you miss an indicator, you get zero. If there's that gap, you get partial points, you end up with partial points, maybe eight points, maybe 41 points, it depends on the calculation. We had 35% of our schools earn a 100% of perfect grade in the AMO, compared to the statewide, only 6% of schools had a 100% AMO. So, here's what a, each school gets a multi-page AMO report. So, here we're looking at simply one school's reading AMO measure. There's a lot of numbers and it's pretty small, but I'm gonna try and use this pointer here. So, here are all the possible subgroups down the left. To determine which subgroups count, you're gonna look at, see if I can find it, the number who took the test, and any of those numbers that are 30 or greater are gonna count. So, at this school, which happened to be Tyler Run Elementary School, 317 students took the test, so 317 students in grades third, fourth, and fifth took the reading test. So, they are counted as an AMO, and they will earn points, we'll show you here. White students was a subgroup, 268, and IEP students, students with disabilities, or the number was 32. So, there are three subgroups that are possible here out of the 10 for Tyler Run. Here you see the goal, and the goal for reading this year is 83.4 for each subgroup. So, they calculate the percent proficient for each subgroup. So, all students, 97.5% were proficient, so they met that goal. White students, 98.1% were proficient, so they met that goal. And students with disabilities, 81.3% were proficient, and the goal was 83.4. So, they missed that goal by 2.1 percentage points, and then when you follow that across, the points that are awarded, you get zero points. So, of those 32 students, we missed the goal by 2.1%, about one student, and we were awarded zero points. So, then the points are totaled, so we earned 200 of a possible 300, 100 for each of the groups that met the goal, 200, or zero for the group that didn't meet the goal out of 300. So, our percentage for reading was 66.7. The same calculation is then done with math, so here we have reading, we'll do the same with math, and the subgroups will be the same, so if they take one test, they take the other. And then, the math scores will be totaled here, and the total will be out of 600, and you'll get a total points awarded for a total, total overall grade. Another example of reading, this is at a middle school, Orange Middle School, a school with more subgroups. So, again, you look down the, gotta find my column again, number who took the test, all students, 769, economically disadvantaged, 113, Asian or Pacific Islander, 79, African American, 59. So, you can go down there, but there are seven, seven of the 10 subgroups counted at Orange Middle School. So, an easy way to do that, the cheap, is to see the total possible subgroup points, and it's 700, you know, 100 possible per subgroup, so that tells you there are seven subgroups. Then you look at the proficiency percentage against the goal, so all students met, economically disadvantaged, did not meet, they missed that goal by two tenths of a percent, so zero points are awarded. Asian Pacific Islander met the goal, African American missed the goal, so zero points are awarded. Over here is when they, they calculate the improvement of the previous, LY columns are all last year's grades, so that's when they determine if partial points are awarded, and if any partial points were awarded for those groups, they'd be denoted on the far right.
So, in the all students, they surpassed the goal, 91 to 83, but because last year's was 92, they, they have a negative improvement, but they still get the 100 points.
Correct, because their negative improvement was lower than, but doesn't mean the gap, the gap that would've existed, if the gap was significant enough the previous year. It's very complicated. It's very complicated.
Yeah.
It starts to make sense.
That actually makes sense.
But one point that you did bring up, just one second, the all students means obviously all students. Any student who qualifies for multiple subgroups is counted in each subgroup. So a student, a student who is an all students, who might be economically disadvantaged and white and have a learning disability would be included in four different subgroups. And their grade would be counted four times. Add me to the question.
I was just asking, so we get, for the AMO, for all students, we automatically get a category for that, right?
Correct.
For everybody, as long as there were 30 people that are in there.
So that's the one given in all of our schools, because all of our schools have a population of over 30 who has tested grades. And then there's always going to be one other subgroup, because every student's going to count in at least two subgroups. Typically, I think in all of our schools, the other subgroup is white.
Why don't we, we could lump it instead of, I know you have to just for the state from the performance index. Why don't we have a separate spreadsheet that just has it by the school and the number of kids, not based on any other factor besides, you know, scholarship, like how well, if the school had, you know, 400 kids that weren't able to be here.
Yeah, definitely.
Versus that, then you can target the schools.
Right.
Without having to go around.
For subgroups.
Right, that's what I mean, like you've got eight different calculations going on. We can just do it by, this school didn't do very well. Didn't matter what color was, whatever they're from, they just didn't do well. So we need to go there.
And that's the purpose of, that's the purpose of the performance index ranking, index. Every student is included. And then you just decide if they, or you take everyone's scores. You give an extra weight for being advanced, more weight for being accelerated, one weight for being proficient, and so on. So that's why that performance index is so important, because it takes all the groups out of it. And it's just another line, so I was still looking.
Isn't that all students then?
Yeah.
You would just look at all students.
And the all students does show you, sorry, the, yeah, the overall proficiency rate. And the performance index tells you how, where at in proficiency, were they not just proficient and above, but were they advanced or accelerated, or advanced as well. So now I want to turn your attention to.
I do, Mr. White, I do think that we do exactly what you're suggesting in that when our principals get this data, they look at every single student's test score. We give them, at the beginning of each year, we give them projected levels of performance for every student for that year. And then they examine post, after the test, how the kids did based on how they were projected to do. They start doing targeted interventions. We look at the students who are not projected to pass, to be proficient, and we start targeting interventions and resources in those areas.
How long have we been doing that?
Seven, eight, maybe 10 years, as long as I've been.
Annual report.
As long as we've been doing the annual report. I made the projections, we, certainly since Dr. Wade's been here, quite a long time.
I'm going to call you that now. Oh, Dr. Wade.
Not Wade, Dr. Ian Wade.
Dr. Wade, I was like, oh, he's getting formal now.
He's lost more than I am, really. He's lost more than all of us.
Yes, he is.
Thank you for that clarification.
So now if you want to look at the three high schools, because another part of the gap closing is that graduation rate, and that obviously applies only to our three high schools. And attendance is a more unique concern at each of the high schools as well. We talked about attendance and participation rate mattering for these rankings, and when students are able to drive themselves and have other responsibilities. Attendance becomes more of a challenge. So with, here at Olentangie High School, their overall AMO grade was an A. They had three subgroups, all students, white, and students with disabilities. Again, the goal is 83.4%. And you can see that they met all of their goals for proficiency in those subgroups in reading. They also met all of their goals in those subgroups for math and in the two subgroups for graduation. The reason the students with disabilities don't appear in the graduation rate goal is the reading proficiency, math proficiency goal, we're looking at that here, is 10th graders who took the OGT, whereas the graduation rate goal is looking at obviously the seniors. So those are different cohorts of students, so they didn't have 30 or more. So basically, Olentangie was awarded 100 points for each category that met their goals. They have eight categories up there, so they got 800 out of 800, a 100% on their AMO. Turning to Liberty High School, like Olentangie, they met all of their goals in reading proficiency, math proficiency, and graduation rate. However, they missed their attendance rate goal for economically disadvantaged students and African-American students, both under 2%. But because they missed that attendance rate goal, there's that automatic grade demotion required. So though Liberty had 800 out of 800, they were, and a 100%. The new business rules say that they have to be demoted to grades, so their AMO grade was a B because of the attendance of two subgroups. And then lastly, at Orange High School, their grade was a C. They met all of, they have four subgroups. They met their goals in reading. In math, one of the four subgroups did not meet the goal. And in graduation rate, one of the four subgroups did not meet the goal. And it's worth noting that that subgroup that didn't meet graduation rate goal was our students with disabilities. There's something for students with IEPs called social graduation. And when the IEP team determines that after four years of high school, additional education is required, and we're required to educate students with disabilities through the age of 22. Although we make those decisions in the best interest of the student, these calculations do count those students who are not graduating in four years or five years against us. And it's just an inherent, that's the way it is in the system, that unfortunately we're dinged, but we're not ashamed of it at all, because we're still doing what's best for each of our students. But so looking at those first three bullet points, out of the 10 possible categories there, if I'm counting correctly, are 12, excuse me, possible categories. Orange High School met 10 of the 12, which is about, I think, 83.3%, which qualified them for a B. But again, with their attendance rate, their multiracial category missed the attendance rate goal by 6/10 of a percent. So they had to be demoted from additional letter grade down to a C.
And our attendance issues aren't what might be the attendance issue for a typical, or maybe in a large urban district, or some of, you know, our kids buy and large attend school. And when they're not in school, they may be on some trip. We have a lot of students who leave for extended, extended family trips or obligations. There's just so many multitude of things that our kids may not attend, but still maintain high achievement. And so that 0.6% could have been one student, a 15-day trip out of the country.
We have a process called alternative learning experiences. When students leave the district for an extended period of time, be it one week, two weeks, three weeks, to return, to leave the country, to go on a learning experience somewhere, where they file the paperwork ahead of time, they tell us they'll be leaving the school district for an extended period of time, they get their assignments, they continue their learning, so that when they return, they don't miss a beat. And, you know, it's been a largely successful practice in the district, and we've had a positive response from parents for a long time, and teachers report good things from us as well. But those students, when they are gone, do count against our attendance rate.
And they don't just do, from what I understand and from what I've seen from friends whose kids have done it, they do their work that they had. And then usually there's a writing a paper, writing something about the experience itself. So they still have to do all their regular classwork and then do additional classwork on top of the learning, to describe the learning experience or what they learned or what they did, so.
Yeah, high school students have the opportunity to use those experiences to do credit flexibility and actually earn an entire different course credit, traveling abroad, say. But they would be absent while they're earning their credit. So very confusing the way they calculate the annual measurable objectives, but we're learning more and more about it each day. Again, when the state releases these report cards, so a lot of these calculations were released for the first time to us as well. So we've been digesting them over the past month or so. I think it's been beneficial to have these conversations with you. Next time, when we return in October, we will have the annual report on academic achievement ready for you. Again, we'll be presenting our progress on all of the district benchmarks. And one of those benchmarks is state report card information, but the rest of the academic benchmarks cover all of our own calculations and our own measures that we help hold ourselves accountable to beyond what the state has.
So how much stuff is out there if the average Joe, I mean, I get dizzy seeing all this stuff. There's a lot of stuff here, a lot of levels. So if someone out in the community wants to understand this better, is there stuff on the state report card website that explains it more? Are you a resource for people to get more information to understand, you know, when someone stands up and says, and we got that horrible C, to understand what might have gone into that and that C is red expectations and how many different things? What's the opportunity for the public to better understand these grades?
Yeah, the public is always welcome to contact me at the district to talk about it. Also, all of our building principals are well-versed in the data of their buildings. So parents of children who live in a building can always contact the building. And if you just like to dig into data yourself, all of this data is available to the public. I think the website is newreportcard.ohio.gov.
Or if you go to the Ohio Department of Education.
Yeah, it's one of the names.
But does it have the explanations and?
Yeah.
There are one-page explanations.
Because I was on it today, but saw just the main, because I have someone who contacted me that I work with, who has a family moving in, and they wanted to know which school in Olentangie was the best school. And I said, what Dr. Lucas always says is, you can't, they're all good, you can't get a bad education in any of them, and send them to the report card site. And so for someone who's not from the area, or from someone who has a, you know, particular school they want more detail on, I just want them to know they have resources.
The website, the state website has what they call a parent-friendly language, one-page documents summarizing the report cards. They also have the technical documents explaining the intricacies of each of the calculations. You can download the spreadsheets at district level or building level for all of the schools in the state as well. So if a parent were just moving to central Ohio, they could create their own spreadsheet of which districts they're interested in and sort of stuff like that as well.
And I'll tell you, parents do that. Just from coffee chat, questions, that's exactly what they do. And obviously, they have their choice to move anywhere here.
Yeah, they're moving from a high-performing district, but that has, from the spreadsheet I saw from Brian, like a $15,000 cost per people. So something like, and so was sharing some of that information with them. But some of this can just get so complicated and it's easy to look at a letter and go, oh, we got a D or we got a C. And it just goes so much deeper. And people have to know where you get the.
Just anecdotally, I spoke with two parents last night at Liberty Middle School at parent conferences. One, family moved here from Seattle, one from Northern Virginia. Not four jobs, but four of the schools. They wanted to relocate and find good schools, and they did a national search and they both wound up here.
Given some of the sensitivity of the data to the, to the grade, where one kid can flip UFO grade, how do we ensure the integrity of the data at the building level?
Well, the, all of the data is reported continuously, like for attendance, through the state EMIS website, which is the state reporting website. So we're very thorough in making sure that our data is clean data in the district. We're, for as long as I've been here and before, been very attentive to making sure there's coding for all of those things. For instance, anytime a student is out of the district for an absence, it's not a matter of just marking absent, they're marking the reason. It could be out of the country, you know, they're injured, medical, and those are all nuanced things. But we're very certain that we enter that data accurately. Our building secretaries are crucial in that, at the first level. And then we work through central office to review the data. We also have a contract with TREC that reviews services, and they have dated people who have weekly meetings with the state EMIS reporting people to make sure that everything's being calculated correctly. And then what we do is we run error reports from EMIS that calculate or that generate just hundreds of pages-long spreadsheets that we then go through. And when an error exists, we go through and make sure we correct that until we get no errors. So it's an ongoing process and there's many people involved. It's not one thing where one person is behind the door controlling that data at any point. There's lots of eyes.
Sure, I'm glad you asked that question, because that's good information right there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forward to the final report next time. Okay, we now transition to Mr. Kern. In the first reading of the October 2013 five-year financial forecast, everyone should have had that as exhibit A to the agenda.
Well, thank you, President O'Brien, the rest of the board, and Dr. Lucas for giving me the opportunity this evening to go over the first reading of the five-year forecast. As you know, we're required by state law and to file with OD by the end of October, a five-year forecast of our general fund. We're also required to do one update at the end of May, May 31st. So you'll see this twice this year. We also too, which is unique to me coming from Dublin, we also have, as far as reviewing, not only presented tonight, but we also have an audit finance committee who we present the forecast to, give the notes and the forecast themselves to go over. And they'll go over recommendations or use their expertise from a variety of fields that those particular individuals are in to help us go through the forecast. So thank goodness this time we just had some, a couple wordsmithing things that we needed to clean up in. With that being said, let's get into the forecast here. We're kind of, we're going to kind of break it out in kind of three sections type tonight. One is kind of where we started. Let's start with the May forecast before I started here, that was approved by the board. And then go through revenues, and then go through expenditures, and then kind of where we're at, at the end of the line, we're talking about ending balances. As you can see through here, May of 2013's forecast, we have a positive balance through fiscal year '16, with beginning to be negative in FY '17. One of the things that affects this, and you'll see it later too, that is by, when this was done, mind you, we're starting this to be able to meet with the finance committee almost a month ahead of time, when we really first presented, is the state binding budget wasn't completed at that point. So at that time, we thought we had a little better news. I'll get into it a little later. Some revenue summary points, some changes from May 2013's forecast. As you see, for FY '14, real estate collections are higher. It's really, really a wash is the reason why. If you look down the TIP income tax sharing thing, we had a property over in Westerville that was previously abated that would come off abatement, but then will come on our real estate collection. So essentially, we reported one place and the other, it's a wash. There's no change in the total outcome of total revenues. One of the big increases that I previously touched on is the state foundation increases. We had, when the original governor's proposal came out, they're looking very favorable at, I believe, additional 20 million.
Yeah, like 331%.
Yeah. That sounds about right.
Big number.
Big number. Nice big number for revenue side of things. Unfortunately, I guess we were probably considered, some people would call us the poster child for that's not fair. So they developed what's called growth caps, which is 6.25% in FY '14 and 10.5% in FY '15. Caps, if you're looking at comparing the May forecast, FY '14 is approximately 521,000 higher. And then for FY '15, approximately 1.3 million comparing from the May forecast to this current October forecast. What does this all mean? If we were, as the formula, as you see the formula now, would be, let's say, fully, given us our fully funded based on our enrollment and all the components of the forecast, we had our, I had to call it a cap hit, I always reference the NFL. We recommend the salary cap there type thing, but we're talking about revenue cap here. Our cap hit is over $30 million. So if it was, essentially, it would be fully funded, we'd be getting what we were supposed to be getting with the formula what was intended. We'd be getting over $30 million additional value in what we're getting currently.
That's significant.
What's that?
That's significant. We wouldn't ever ask to get a levy again.
Right, ever, yeah.
Potential, because remember that lasts two years, every two years.
Well, that's very accurate, it's a two-year window.
Right.
Revenue risk assessments. Revenue risk assessments. We've touched on a little bit. These are the impacts that will impact not only currently but going out into the future. You know, as our, two of our biggest, and you'll see some slides after this, two of our bigger revenue sources of our courses are actually our biggest, most majority as our funding comes from real estate taxes. Two things that will affect going forward. One is new construction. We currently have some new construction in there, albeit small, approximately ranging from the current year of 1.5 going out to 18 of 2.4%. New construction, as you can see across the district, new houses are popping up. Fortunately, new apartments are popping up and maybe potentially, there's a lot of open land out there where even more houses could pop up. What does this mean? The fortunate side of things would be the new construction dollars coming in for real estate. The bad thing is we'd have new children coming in that would probably most like it unless they give us a lot of low-density developments out there, probably want to cover the cost of educating those new students. So, it's good on one hand to see new construction, but it's good for the economy again, be back up and building houses and new construction. If it's new houses, it's not always necessarily good for us. Reappraisal, which will happen next year. We have remained relatively flat for this upcoming reappraisal for next year. And out three years after that, we have a 2% gain, which is very minimal actually. If a 1% swing on reappraisal over the five years, if it's a gain, gives us about $300,000. If it's a 1% decrease, it's about $500,000 decrease. If you're thinking house bill 920, our last two levies are currently collected at 7.9, so they won't be able to adjust those levies to make up the RAR at the max we can. So, that's why reappraisal goes down. That's why they further decrease some revenue. Another thing, risk assessment, state foundation revenue. Like I mentioned, there's three state budgets affected by this forecast. I talked about the current one for FY 14 and 15. Going out in the outer light of year 16, 17, and 18, have small growth projected, approximately on average 5% a year going out. We will continue to push our legislators to recognize, as Dr. Lucas likes to call it, we're an outlier with tremendous growth that we've had over the years as to recognize that, of course, that growth, but also that our state revenue has remained flat over the years but not coincide with that growth, which the formula should. But usually, it's based off of your attendance and the enrollment of your children and the system and hasn't reflected that over the years. If you go to the next slide, well, one thing I do, I'll bring it up now as I'm going forward here, is if you look to the next slide here, you can see, as I mentioned before, general property taxes, of course, are 71% of our revenue base for our general fund with the state revenue coming in at approximately 9%. Actually, 9%, that's a property tax application. 5% will be our foundation fund. One thing I wanted to point out is, I think Julie's mentioned a couple times, I think Stacy, you mentioned, I forward to all the board members and Dr. Lucas, a little sheet about, took what the dispatch print evaluate, evaluation tax rates of local Franklin County districts. We do fall ever so slightly in Franklin County, so we were included in that as a primary, of course, Delaware County. I went ahead and added also Delaware County's school districts to that. One, nice pieces of data, not only the tax rate information that I updated for you according also with the districts that had income tax levies and village equivalents. I added a couple extra columns out there. And one column that is very telling on our, I guess, being left behind almost per se in our growth of our state foundation is taking cup report data and unfortunately, the last one has been available, it was from FY 12. Taking the cup report of data from FY 12 from the House Department of Education, we get approximately $335 per pupil, which among the comparison districts out there, New Albany, I think, was the only one, they might have actually slightly higher.
402.
402. Upper Arlington actually paid the state back for their state foundation. So, but one thing I think to remind this is, I know we have some teachers from Dublin, that was my previous district here. Even them, they're getting $880 if really just, it's additional $500 for the 18,000 students that we have approximately in Olentino. That's $9 million more a year just at that level. A group that typically falls in our peer districts, our similar grouping districts from the House Department of Education is Pickerington. Pickerington is around a little over $3,600 they get per student. So, there are some wide disparities out there, so.
So, Brian, that nine million a year would be about three mills?
Yes.
Per year?
Per year.
Which is about what we grow.
The state average is a little over 3,000 per student or per pupil out there as far as foundation form, format of funding is. One other column I thought was very interesting was, is the state format of funding as percentage of income tax liability. Really, essentially what that means, if you're looking at a percentage, ours is 3.97%. What it really means is for every dollar our residents pay in income tax to the state of Ohio, Olentino Schools gets back four cents, four cents. For example, another district, Hamilton, is on the opposite end of the spectrum. Now, granted, they do have some, probably some socioeconomic issues, a little different district than we are, but in the southeast corner of Columbus there is, they get $2.91 back for every dollar the residents pay in income tax.
We should probably, sorry, we should probably work with the School Funding Action Committee and the groups to really inform Representative Brenner, Senator Jordan, make sure that they can effectively represent the need to this district. Because obviously, by the fact pattern we're hearing tonight, it doesn't feel like we're being effectively represented if we're getting the short end of the stick on these measures.
And that really hits two points again, is if you see the graph there, the 71% of the real estate. The good thing with that is, is the state can't take that away from us or taking that and giving that to somebody else, unlike our state income tax dollars we pay. That 71% stays all local and comes back to two districts. Be nice if we had a little more help from the state though.
I'd rather get three times the return on my money than just put this stuff in the bank. But I appreciate the thought, but to Kevin's point, we're, they get three times because we get $4. So.
Four cents.
Four cents, I'm sorry. We get four cents and so they're, they're getting ours. We're a donor district.
It could be the reason that they haven't been on the ballot for.
20 years.
20 years.
And they have some nice schools, thanks to the state.
Stacy, if you want to remind for that too, is with someone like us where, if you're looking at the cup report, there's a lot of great data on that cup report there. Most of the Hamilton schools, and don't forget the percentages, whereas from House School of Facility Commission, so there again, the state helped out. I believe our ranking, our last ranking that I looked at was, we're 573rd out of 610, so fact chance we're all right with.
But as Dave has pointed out, we don't necessarily want to use that money.
That's right.
Because you're tied to their building specs and we have built our buildings less expensive than their building specs.
Than their benchmarks, that's right. Like development of the prototype.
Yep. We'll never get it, so.
Onto the next slide. There again, just a reiteration of that low over state revenue. As you can see, the blue line, I believe it's blue, in the colored line, but it's pretty flat since the last 10 years. As you can see, local share has to go up with the new levy coming onboard in the first half hitting FY 11 in there and collection in FY 12. So, that's revenues. If you want to go through questions now or we can, I do have questions at the end. So, if you have any questions on revenues, I will go into expenditures.
We've got casino revenue here, right?
Yes.
About $1 million a year?
900, little, 900,000 in casino revenue. I see, I think I read an article today or yesterday that they're down. So, for this month.
Sounds worried about the risk of the casino revenue. I mean, can I utilize the state projections for that? There could be some risk that that starts coming in short if that pattern kind of persists.
I mean, one of the things is, you know, there, I think we have a glut of them now across the state. So, I mean, the novelty has probably wore off, I'm assuming, hopefully it doesn't wear off too much going forward, at least from that concept. We'll see again, we get that twice a year, January 31st and August 31st, so it's the last day. We'll see how those collections are coming. If you want to move on to expenditure summary points. Really, not a whole lot of change in May forecast. We do have some decreases in personal services if you're looking at FY 14 compared to the May forecast. That's mostly due to attrition savings. When we talk about attrition savings, we're talking about what staff leaves for either resigning or retiring. We replace that individual typically a younger, lower on the salary schedule. Savings are accounted for in the forecast. Retirement insurance benefits are also down for FY 14 compared to May and that's simply due to, retirement benefits are mostly tied to salary. We can think about retirement and Medicare. So.
What's included in the increase from 14 to 18?
For.
15 something percent increase. I guess 30.
Talking about retirement benefits, Mr. White?
Yes.
Yeah. It'll be a couple things there. One is, if you notice, we do, the point I just, one of the points that was mentioned is, is if you look at personal, I'll talk about expenditure drivers later on in this forecast, but we'll address this now. If you look at our personal services line, the line right above that, 3.01, you can see our, due to growth of staff, due to growth in enrollment and increase, step increases for staff, our personal service line or our wages goes up. So, the retirement Medicare portion, which is a fixed percentage, goes along the line with that, that's what goes up. Also too, would be another big driver that impacts the expenditure line going up, Mr. White, would be medical insurance. Currently, we have a renewal that's ongoing right now. Currently, we are at, renewal is coming in at about 15% increase over last year in premiums. As I'm touching on this a little later, but we're ahead of it now, I'm talking about it. About 4% of that actually is due to the Affordable Care Act, of that percentage. Now, the other, which accounts for about, and I say about 900,000 of our premium increase is due to Affordable Care Act, it's about 4%. So, the other 11% is just what they consider trend going forward. Our trend going out in this forecast is between 12 and 13% going out. Medical insurance going out. So, that's all you see, big increases.
Brian, we're still on track to achieve the savings we committed to when we, excuse me, the OTA contract?
Yeah, I mean, this came in, I mean, this renewal came in a little, like I said, we haven't finished filing these up, we're still pushing back. Because we had, our claim data actually came in about 3% less for the period that they were looking at for the rate renewal, the claim data came about 3% less. So, like I always like to argue, how can you call trend, which is essentially an inflationary factor of close to 12% when our claims were actually down. That's pretty much the going rate around the Columbus area at this time. Like I said, we'll go ahead and push them down. We'll also look ahead too. We haven't gone out for an RFP in a few years. We will be doing that next spring, summer to look out shop around per se to the insurance carriers. Talking with Steve from Aon, he gets calls all the time that people want to know when we're going to go out. So, that's one of the things we're definitely pushing with Medicare Mutual for this year, but also saying, hey, we're going to go out and shop to get the best deal that we can for the district going forward. Our current insurance plan for the negotiated agreements is, parent and business agreement goes through June of 2015. At that time, insurance benefits are up for negotiation and so.
You said you were going to count later, I just wanted, because you were talking about personnel and retirement, is there a fixed number that, or a standard where they, like enrollments, 11% around there from 14 to 18, but the retirements, 50% something increase and personnel's 19? Is there like a standard for the education field where like if enrollment goes up 2% then benefits, retirement goes up?
Well, I tell you what, in the next couple of slides, I'll talk about a little bit how why personnel goes up. We'll talk about the expenditure drivers if you don't mind. What slides here? Hopefully, this will address your question. If it doesn't, we'll come back to it. I just want some risk assessments going forward. We currently have no new buildings in this forecast.
Can you repeat that?
We currently have no opening of any new buildings in this forecast through FY 18.
Or additions?
Or additions.
Which means we do not sell bonds.
Correct.
Which means our taxpayers don't pay anything on those bonds if we don't sell them.
If you haven't sold them, you don't pay me.
Right.
Yes, you're referring to is the $24 million approximately May 2011 bond issue of which we issued approximately eight to nine million of that. The other 15 million was allocated or pinpointed for elementary 16, which is, again, to reiterate, since you guys want me to do that, reiterating is not in this forecast, so. Another risk assessment, Mr. White, you were talking about enrollment and stuff, how that affects staffing and I guess I'll hit more in new slides. But enrollment projections really impact us, you know how I mentioned new construction for real estate taxes will impact us for revenue, but also new students coming. So, to meet those new students, we would have to, we have ratios that I'll go over in the next couple of slides that will talk about adding growth, top growth of staff, most of teachers to meet those new students that are coming in. We still do, I do have a chart in here that shows the projected forward. Another risk assessment going forward, I earlier mentioned too, is our current negotiated agreement runs through 2015. When that comes up, that will have impacts on 16, 17, and 18. Currently, we have just the step increases, our step increases average around 2.7% in the forecast. And the last thing is again, insurance expense. There again, we talked about trend increases that we have forecasted throughout the forecast, between 12 to 13%. That is tied to, as you know, as you go farther out in the forecast, you get less accurate to a field as one of the best information we have.
So, it's really an increase over the 15% because the employees are paying part of the, I think that's the part that we bear.
We pay 8% such for a fee. Another thing that I didn't put on this slide here, another thing that, I'm just here, we might take an off right, I think, but that is not factored in the forecast, but we'll have, could have an impact. You mentioned that our bond, last bond levy to do capital. He mentioned that our bond, last bond levy to do capital improvements, or capital maintenance, actually, of our capital equipment, our asphalt growths out there, is scheduled to try to stretch it as far as we can through 14 and 15, but that's not, that's, you know, he talks about doing the 20-year plan and stuff. I think Julie, you mentioned, we talked about the graph in the districts that have permanent improvements. That's not factored into a general fund forecast, but something, you know, if we do nothing, that's going to have an impact, where there's stuff that's going to break, there's stuff that's going to break down, there's maintenance, there's something that occurs when that bond dollars that we have out there, once those are gone, we'll still, we'll have to start adding those back into the forecast if there's not another mechanism for that. So, that's something I didn't add on this thing, but Jeff's going through his presentation, that's something to keep in mind when you get those outlier years, that could have an impact on the forecast. If you look at this graph, as you can see, which is probably not unlike most districts, if you look at the two biggest chunks, they're going to be personal services and the fringe benefits lines, which approximately 83% of our expenditures. We already service industry, teachers, students, all the rest of our classified staff, bus drivers included, is taken and required to deliver our education model to the district, so we are a service industry, so that is not unlike most school districts. I believe Dublin, when I was there, was around 90% of the total came from fringe benefits and personal services, so. Mr. White, here's why, I think hopefully we'll start getting into the next slide here, when you're talking about why these increases and stuff like this is a kind of a thing that we kind of look at. This expenditure driver really is, this has to do with our personal services, our wages. As you can see, we do, we try to do, I think the CIP, I believe, Gail is 15.5 currently. As far as certified, people teacher ratio, the CIP benchmark is seven, I think is, talks about what we try to keep our ratios at for growth, or not growth, but just a people teacher ratio. When we're looking at additional staffing for growth going out there, our model is 25 for the high school, middle school. So, we look at enrollment at those levels, and kind of apply a percentage to that, say it's 25 new, you know, students coming in at the middle school level, we need to add one teacher at the middle school level, so 25. Elementary is 24 to 1. We also have a factor in there for, figure that about 10% of our population has students with disability, so we have a factor in there to kind of account for those students that had additional dimension specialists to meet those needs. I do want to point out on the line, people teacher ratio, 15.92, 16.07 going out. See a dip in FY18, 18 back down to 15.97. One of the things that we discussed at length, one of the things we discussed really at length, is, we do it in August and September, is new staffing for next year already. And one of the things that we discussed as district leadership team is, we were pushing against the wall as far as those, I don't know if I can call it limits, a better word for it, in our special education classrooms, our ratios per se, where we had to add additional staff in FY15, 16, and 17 to kind of meet those needs of those ratios that we've developed. And our leaders came in and did a presentation to us to kind of really fill. Those are positions added beyond what I talked about, enrollment to growth, these are additional positions. That's kind of why I think you see.
For student needs.
Student needs of our mandated ratios that we had out there, that dip goes back down to slightly under 16. I'll wait till I get to the other slide, we can see the difference over the years, how that actually has increased. Here's our enrollment growth going forward, last essentially 15 years, since FY2003, around 7,500. Project at the end of this forecast will have almost 20,200 students. Dramatic increase. So, we have to, as staff, to meet those needs of the enrollment gains. There again, that's where if you apply your percentages for retirement Medicare, kind of go hand in hand almost with those growth in staffing. People teacher ratios that we talked about, we went back to 2011, we had about 15.34. This year, around 15.92, and then 15.97, we're hovering around the 16 mark for this forecast. What does this mean? What's the significance of two, going back to October 2010? That was also the last forecast right before the enrollment last ballot that was approved in May of 2011. What it really doesn't mean, if you look at 14 and 15 there, I'm starting to get a little white, kind of small there too, but what does that really mean? That really, when you talk about people teacher ratios, if we would have maintained on the level that we are, if we stayed at October 2010, we would currently have 130 more teachers on staff, 130 more teachers. If we had gradually increased those people teacher ratios, our performance index keeps going up, we've been able to push it. Discussion that we had as part of that is, how much more can we push it to where you may get to that tipping point, drop off, and start going down as far as educational achievement? So, we'll continue to monitor that going forward.
But in 10 also had another building, right? When we did the forecast in 2010?
Yes.
So, you take a building out, and you press this ratio a little bit, and you get a significant amount of leverage on the expense side?
Exactly. It's, that's considerable savings to the district. Next slide here is just what I like to call the run rate. We're currently slightly over revenues, over expenditures, but typically of most school districts like ourselves, we have to rely on property taxes. As you get farther out from passing the latest levy, that gap starts to widen as you go out there, which is not, like I said, unlike most districts like ourselves. So, where does this lead us to? This leads us into where we are today. We have a better forecast than in May, slightly better, and if you look at positive balance in FY17, just very, you can barely see the little green that goes up there, about 400,000 after the unencumbered balance in FY17.
So, we've got a cash balance until beginning of 18?
What's that? Yeah, we'll have a positive cash balance until we start in fiscal year 18, so once. Unfortunately, FY17, that small carryover will not cover even one payroll going forward, Any questions? Could I address some of your questions, Mr. White? I know you had.
Yeah, maybe, to me, what was the, can you repeat again, the major drivers and the increase, the 53% increase in the retirement insurance? You told me.
Yeah, major drivers are increase in the wages line, you have, which will also, but that will increase your retirement, which SDRS and STRS, which is the 14% that will require to pay, employer share plus the Medicare, 1.45%. And then also increases due to trend increases for our medical insurance, all insurance really, as they go out far within the forecast, contribute to that increase.
14, 15, it's 30 something percent?
I haven't calculated exactly.
I mean, should answer, you get a mix of both rate and volume, right? So, there'll be more teachers in the system, so you're going to pay more in retirement, more for insurance, plus we're assuming some inflationary rate increases, nothing dramatic.
The enrollment goes up 11% and the personnel goes up 19% from 14 to 18, but the retirement benefits and insurance benefits, because of 53%, which just seems kind of high.
Well, the retirement, we don't have any control over.
It's a formula driven by the state.
That's a fix.
Well, the pickup on the pickup, you do?
No, we don't do it with the teachers, though. That's the, the teachers and the.
So, the administration.
Yeah, that's what, 70?
I haven't calculated, Mr. White, but I'm assuming the reason you're saying we have a line of 11% increase in enrollment?
Well, there's just.
And a 19% increase in staff expenditure, or staff.
Yeah, just from the line.
Just from the line.
Expenditures, and the enrollment was.
Increase in staff or increase in expenditures, I'm not.
The 11% was the.
We also have step increases also factored into 2.7% along with additional staffing.
So, whatever's laying in the current contract, so 50.
Did the, did the Finance and Audit Committee talk about, we've gone around and around with this, a cash ending balance policy? Because when you have, you know, $413,000 at the end of the day, and it doesn't even, wouldn't even cover your salary expenses for a month?
We touched on it a little bit, it kind of went my recommendation, I just went back from my sample size of one. We always, it was a double, we kind of, and I think this is a good standard, if you look at GFOY, they kind of, the National GFOY organization kind of looks at this too, as far as the operating balance at the end of your levy cycle, and I think the rating agencies too, will take a peek at this too, and look and see, it'd be nice to have one month's cash balance at the end of your levy cycle, it's kind of the cash balance policy. Kind of informally asked some treasurers around the area about if they have any formal cash balance policies. We do not have a policy. Most districts, like the one in Dublin, wasn't in formal policy. I don't know very many that have a formal policy. The one I can think of is Orange School District of Southeast, very wealthy affluent district, a hot smaller district, actually has a, I believe, a one month's cash balance.
We should probably take it to the Audit Finance Committee and get their perspective on.
Right.
If we were to do one, what might it look like? How would you govern it? Because you have a trade officer, you have a hard line cash balance policy, it forces you to do things at times that you don't want to. On the flip side, if you don't have one, it's kind of, you know, you're loosey goosey as to when you actually get on the ballot.
Right.
So, I think it would be good to get a sense from the Audit Finance Committee, some perspective, and then we can talk through, what do we want to do based upon the recommendation.
And then, we had asked Brian to do a comparison for us, I think it came up in the last meeting about millages, oh, because of bond debt. And so, he looked at our millages in comparison to like 25 other school districts, and our operating millage is 45.03 mills. And then, our bond, which is our, you know, a lot of our bonds were funded with no additional millage, and so our bond is only at 8.72. So, it's like, well, it's a total of 53.75 is our total millage that our taxpayers are paying, whereas Bexley is 65, so that gives you a benchmark, Bexley's at the top. You know, depending on how levies turn out in November, and bonds turn out in November, will fall farther down because Delaware, Upper Arlington, and Columbus are just right behind us, so.
Yeah, Delaware actually passed this past spring, so for a bond issue, so they'll go up 3.6 mills. They might not be collected at 3.6 mills, it might be a little lower.
Right.
Upper Arlington is up on November for four mills, and Columbus is on a combined bond and operating 9.01 mills.
So, the bond debt is 11% of the, of the millage.
If you've got the cash reserve in 17, couldn't you run with the current budget right here? Wouldn't we just run a levy in 17 because it collects in 18? Because you're not running on pure cash balance until next year, right? I mean, you're getting property tax increases.
I'm sorry, could you, could you speak up that? We're having a hard time hearing you.
I said that the, if you have a cash balance in 17, can't you run a levy in 17 based on the current budget? And would collect in 18? And you'd have enough money, based on the current budget?
So, what you're saying is, you're.
Talking about the cash balance.
We'll run a levy on calendar year 2017, is what you're saying?
Right, if you run it then, then it collects in 18.
And we'll start collecting to 2018.
Right.
I think it's hard to make that call now, you've got two state budgets between now and then.
Yeah.
Which could frankly.
I'm just talking technicalities on here.
Okay, and I'm trying to provide some context to your technicality, right? You've got two state budgets that are going to happen between now and then, that may make you revisit that decision.
They may, but based on this, if there were no other changes, that's what I'm asking. If there weren't any other changes in the state budget, you could run a levy in 17.
If you had to.
Yeah, if you had to.
If you go into cash balance.
As you remember this, and I reiterate, if you get farther out in this forecast, the less accurate we get.
Right.
Like I said, one of the things I mentioned too, was this, one of the things different from an October 2010 forecast was, if you looked at State Foundation, it was flat throughout the forecast. I actually, we actually put 5% in going forward, so. Of course, we were on lobby, we're on pusher legislators for a lot more than that, but if that doesn't come, then that positive balance in 17 is no longer going to be there.
I always, I always like to jump in. This is always the great opportunity for.
Go right ahead, don't worry about it.
But, you sat in that meeting with Speaker of the House, the Chair of the Education Committee, the Chair of the Finance Appropriations Committee. You heard them say that we will look at Oland Tangee and districts like Oland Tangee that are growing, and we will try to make some accommodations. I continue to come back to this as we talk to our representatives. Additional dollars for Oland Tangee equates to less number of times we have to come back for letters.
Absolutely.
And I know a lot of energy gets thrown into a lot of different things in this school district, but if there's not one thing that we can rally behind, it would be called tax relief for everyone in the community. We can rally behind that cause. We have representatives here that are representing us in Columbus for that. I would like to stay, Mr. White, off the ballot till 2000 and whenever, because I don't like running tax less.
I didn't say anybody did, I was just asking, in theory, a question based off the budget that was in.
And we stated at the beginning of this, that Dublin gets nine cents of every dollar, we get four cents. So, if we get, if we get what Dublin gets, that's an additional.
Dublin, sorry, we're just yelling at Dublin, they're in the eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I don't need to, you know, Ralph over there.
I'm just saying that we can use the help altogether and talk to the representatives.
Yeah, just to reiterate, that's an additional three mills per year. You know, his door, the last two have been 7.9 mills, so.
And that three mills keeps up with growth.
Yeah, and it keeps growing. So, just an additional five cents of every dollar would be a tremendous help.
If we got the state average?
Oh, if we got the state average.
Forget about it.
Yeah.
But that's, that's okay. Baby steps.
Let's just try to beat Dublin now, I mean, match Dublin.
We should have them in and ask them how they're helping.
Yeah. They're taking good notes.
So, it's getting late. Any other questions for Mr. Kerr on the budget, or the forecast, I'm sorry?
Hopefully I addressed everybody's questions. We'll be presenting that, I don't know if we're presenting, but it will be up for approval at the next meeting.
Yep.
So, in the meantime, if you have any questions, feel free to call me, email me, if you want to sit down, you can do that, to go over the forecast and talk about.
Just to continue my theme from earlier, so if someone from the public has questions about the five-year forecast, can they contact you? Where can they get more information on the, on the details?
Contact myself or Mr. Johnson's back there. Are you shaking your hands?
Sure.
And since this will be an action item on the next agenda, there will be public comments on that action item. So we'll have informal, informal opportunities to speak to the forecast.
Great. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, good job. Okay, the last work session item is board liaison updates. So why don't we start with the finance committee?
Well, which is a good segue from the treasurer's report, but indeed we did talk, well, a week and a half, two weeks ago, financial audit committee meeting.
Probably wandered about three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, yeah. And I think it's important too, as you mentioned, the volunteers in that committee, just again as a reminder, those volunteers are all professionals. They're CPAs, they're fiscal officers, they're CFOs, bring a lot of expertise, and there's quite a number of them. There was discussion about what's the impact of the different years. He would ask that question about the different years, what does that mean towards the overall budget of the district? So it's a good group and they went through it real well. And Todd was there, and it was good to see Michael there. He was, you know, our new communications director, learning about the district. So that was, that was good that he was there and it was good meeting.
Okay, great. Next, did you.
Development committee?
Development committee, sure.
Pretty much you heard most of it from Jeff earlier. It's a lot of what the conversation was about. We also saw the enrollment planning and forecast from Future Think with Tracy Healy. And this, last year's projections were within one percent overall for enrollment, projections for all grades. It's just amazing how close they can get on those numbers. We also saw what Jeff didn't talk about is a solar energy presentation. We've seen a couple of presentations now on are there opportunities in the district to save money from a solar energy standpoint? There's lots of different ways to approach that, and that committee's really digging into what's a good idea, what sounds good. We had one that was like, eh, it's not, that's not really where we want to go. And so really looking to make those recommendations, you know, as that committee moves away from how we build buildings, it's how do we improve and make more efficient the buildings we have? And then they reviewed the capital improvements and had the energy conservation specialist in. I'm learning a lot about chillers and all those things. We're doing another tour, so we go monthly and tour the buildings. And we're doing next week Liberty Middle School. So, you know, we go into an older building, a newer building. They've promised I won't have to go up on the roof of this one. But I'm just, they're now looking for some new membership and advertising for some new people, putting some things out in the community, because the focus of that building, that committee really has changed. And to Dave's earlier comments is, we are looking at what should that group be focused on as we go forward, and we'll make those recommendations in January. But they even in their own way are starting that process on their own, looking for people with more of the maintenance and the building experience rather than the, rather than the construction, straight construction and land, you know, they have a land committee and those sorts of things. And so they've started making those changes on their own, but we hope to give them some additional guidance as we move forward with the strategic committee.
Okay. And Julie?
I have a report on, it's a newer group that Stacy and I are part of, and then the Career Center as well. Stacy and I are on a new committee that was formed last March, and we decided we're going to continue with it. It's Adult Facilitation Task Force regarding our diversity issues in our, in our schools. And unlike the presentation we had earlier where they are concentrating on students, we are concentrating on the community. And so we meet every other month to go over, we have a task that's been laid out for us. But on Tuesday, February eleventh, we're actually bringing in, we're bringing, she's been here before, we're bringing her back, it's Dr. Killian, and she did a program on CNN called Kids on Race, and it won an Emmy, and so we're bringing her back as a follow-up. So it'll be at Orange High School in the theater, and it's open to everyone in the community. And that, again, that's Tuesday, February the eleventh. So we're working with that group and, Michael, good to meet everyone there for that meeting. That's a meeting there, we always go beyond our allotted time because there's so much to talk about. And the parents really do want to get involved. We have one parent who is of Indian descent, and she actually goes into the schools and talks to the teachers about the Indian culture. And she said that the feedback that she gets from the teachers is just so phenomenal, but, you know, she talks to them about the Indian culture. And again, it's a volunteer, you know, she does it as a volunteer.
And she's being asked to come into more and more schools, and it's kind of an open question period, and why does this happen? Why does this? And she was great telling her story of, to me, it's just life.
Yeah.
It's just the way I was brought up. And to, I don't realize that other people don't understand some of the traditions, some of the things that may affect the education of a student or the demeanor of a student. And so it's really interesting, and I always hate to have to leave that one because it's the same night as Development Committee, and it's one that I could stay another hour or so and chat with that group. They're doing some great work.
Yeah. Then the other thing I had to report is, I'm also a member of the Delaware Area Career Center Board, and due to state law, the policy is changing on how those members are put on that board. As it stands now, each contributing school district, which is Olentangie, Big Walnut, Buckeye Valley, Delaware City, and then the ESC, have a representative on that board. And all of us are elected officials. So we sit on that board and we make the decisions for that school. There was a law passed this spring that says you do not have to be an elected official to serve on that board, but you do have to have background in HR, in business. You have to represent a, you know, you have to represent the workforce that is in your school. And so we have to pass a new policy on how that, the person from Olentangie, and it doesn't have to be a board member anymore, but how that selection is made. And because of how the policy is written, you kind of have to talk to Delaware, Big Walnut, Buckeye Valley to see who they're picking, because the ratio has, there's a specific ratio that has to be on that board. And like in Buckeye Valley, their major employer up there is agricultural based, not just farming, but agricultural companies, you know, so they might have an issue of finding a person that would fit that. So it's going to be really different and could be a difficult decision.
So this board appoint our representative?
Yes, and you can appoint a school board member. And there can be an application process. And at the Career Center, we worked on a template for like an application.
A screening process?
Yeah, screening process. And so that covers the law and everything. So we have to bring that as a new policy to the next meeting and then vote on it in the November meeting, because it has to go into effect January.
It's not going to have anyone in mind, but can it be a board member who also works in HR and works in the, I mean, does that count as the?
But then there's also, and we have to look into this, terms that they have developed. And it used to be you served a three-year, or a four-year term, and now it's a three-year term. You can only serve two, three-year terms on the Career Center. So it doesn't even match up with the terms on the school board, on a regular school board. And the other thing it doesn't match up is, you don't have to live in the school district. If you work in the school district, you would qualify. But then the thing, the sticky part is that then you have someone on the Career Center Board making tax decisions for people, and they don't necessarily live in the district, you know, to pay those taxes. So that, that's the really, that's the really questionable one. So.
So that policy will come up the next meeting?
Yes, I talked to Linda about it, and so.
Do you think is a good transition to the policy committee? Any updates from the policy committee?
No, there aren't any.
So I guess this will be at the next policy committee, so you can anticipate getting up to speed on it?
Based on the reports I've heard, they're really digging in, they repeated what Jeff Gordon said at the meeting, they're going to do a walk-through of a building, spent five minutes talking about the Delaware Career Center, there's so much to talk about. Going to go watch a American school, and there's an Indian woman that's going through teaching about Indian culture, so.
So that's your update on the policy committee?
I don't think I can top that with the time.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a couple more.
Okay.
The policy committee does meet next Wednesday from two to four. Linda has some new Neola updates that we need to review, so that meeting's scheduled for next Wednesday.
Okay.
Of course, you heard me speak the Strategic Plan Task Force earlier, so that's getting started. And the OEF, Olentangie Education Foundation, just finished their fundraiser with the golf outing, and they netted about fifteen thousand dollars, so that's excellent.
Great.
And then their second big fundraiser, which will be the Community Night, is going to be in March, so there'll be more information about that.
Okay. Last thing, I'll throw in there, I was mystery reader at Freedom for L last Friday, and it was a lot of fun. I'd encourage everyone to do it. It's great as you're in and out in ten minutes.
Yeah.
Literally, I was in and out in ten minutes. But it was great, great experience, see the kids, see the classroom, it was terrific. All right. So with that, I will make, accept the motion to adjourn, unless anyone else has anything to add? No?
It's removed.
It's removed? You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on adjournment? Mr. Kerr?
Mr. King? Yes. Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Five zero.